Kaya leboa. Bele re kala. Ovo thokwa oru lezeve ore. Kivu mani baba duti mo bele. Naki professor Matole Muzeka. Kemu dulesduloa komi ado komiti e shavaning lento za na. Agas professor Matole Muzeka, di fuurseter van di ado komitie van parlament. Wat de dunhet met here i kweisi van di land. En obme rechterkant as yerbare Masipa van di DA. As a led van di parlament. And next to him is honorable Lesuma, member of parliament. And on my left is honorable Rosetta. There are other members of parliament, that provincial legislature that are here. Honorable TM Langa is a member of parliament, I don't see him. Honorable Langa, can you just stand up so they see him? Oh, okay. There is also honorable S. Madling Kosi is here with us. Yeah, okay, thank you. And a member of the legislature, a led van di wetkeven de rat van Nordkap. Renate Liebenberg sa yesu okiso. I learnt something yesterday. That I hope members of parliament and the provincial legislature will take note of. The fact that we have the kwee and ku languages. And when we greet in these languages, we say mbamba kwee. And we also say amka ku. And when we say welcome, we say majoi ey. So when I say majoi ey, I mean you are welcome. And I think it is not acceptable that the Koisan languages still are not yet recognized. King Mushweshwe taught us that the Koisan people are our ancestors. And we cannot recognize the languages of the grandchildren and not the languages of our ancestors. Because without our ancestors, we would not be there. So when we go back to parliament, we are going to prioritize these Koisan languages. And make sure that they are also recognized. Because we really want to restore the dignity of the Koisan people. Ekse, das ni am farbar dat di tal van ons fuur owers. Di Koisan mens nee deeri demokratisere here en erkennes. Ek wop dat as ons derechan parlamentu, ons mut here di tale ob di agenda van di parlament. Set so that here di tale uke erkenn kan vort. But I just want to say that we arrived here a day before yesterday. We were hardly welcomed in this old city of Kimberley. We traveled to DA where we were hardly, where we were welcomed. And the police were even complaining, our security people were complaining that the people are so well behaved that they had no job to do. They had no job to do. Nobody disobeyed the protection officers. Nobody disobeyed the police. And that's what we want to knew, what we want to see in the new South Africa. So as members of parliament, the parliamentary staff, we are proud that here in the Northern Cape, people are self-respecting. They respect others. And therefore, it is much easier to do work here. Because we are working with self-respecting people. And we have no doubt that today, the same self-respect will prevail. Some of you may ask us, why are you here again? Because there was a constitutional review committee which traversed the whole country asking a question. Is it desirable to amend the constitution? To make provision for expropriation of land without compensation? The overwhelming majority of the respondents said yes. And on the basis of that answer, parliament established the ado komiti which I chair and the members of that komiti sit here in front. Now, we are no longer asking the question whether or not it is desirable to amend the constitution. We are asking the second question. The second question is, what do you want to see in the amendment? So we are interested in the content of the amendment. Now, wat ons wel sin? As dat mens mut feront sa. Wat er soort verweesigen van di gronwet moet ons mak. Onses bewes davon dat da sal verskelende opinie daaroor wies. Maar elkeen van jelle is gerechtig op jelle opinie. Das ni nodig om daaroor te bakleen. Want ons parlament sa. Elkeen het dirach om te sa wat ele full omhele eiye fuurs dele de mak. Gama njuama we. Re dili mona. Haru ku ovoza bozo ya ore. Re fetule mulauteo ova yeche. Ri klo ovoza ore. Re uduaana. Ro fetula mulauteo. Re etze ore mu obuele mu batu. Viannung, ado komiti ena. E vata ore. Leru volen leure haru fetula mulauteo ona. Re nguale eeng gamoare mulauteo. Viannung, haru bua kapetu oya mulauteo. Re davale me bono ei fapanee. Viannung, omung loomungo oleng le safa, South Africa. Kaufela aluna baba schwewu le baba ntsu. Re ma South Africa. Kaufela aluna. Omungwe loomungwe ona legamo kwa bonan tava ena ya petuo ya mulauteo. So if omungwe abu antweo sa uduan engli ona. Oskatswenye, kaya ena. Luena buaya hau. Ore haru kutela ko parlamenting. Ro na re daashewa ore me bono ya aluna kaufela. Le nali reketi, re daashewa na le me bono ya alun. But what is important is that our parliament, it is a participatory parliament. It is a representative parliament. And therefore, it means as members of parliament, we don't arrogate to ourselves the wisdom. Because if we thought we were cleverer than all of you, we would not come back to you. We would just sit in Cape Town, take decisions and impose those decisions on you. But because we are an activist parliament, we are a participatory parliament, we have come to get a mandate from you on the continent, on the content of the new amendment. So I want to appeal to all of you that when we give you an opportunity to speak, don't spend time lamenting, blaming this or that. Because we are more interested in what you want us to do when we go to parliament. Because we don't want to misrepresent you. Because the constitution is a very important document. It is a fundamental law of the country. It must reflect the will of the people because it was adopted by the people. So because we value the opinion of each and every one of you, we want us to agree that all speakers will have three minutes so that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak. Ra re. Kaufela aluna le udua kuwa. Ri vata udua ore lereng. Viannung, hale tla mobi le libua. Le ske la vele complaina le etze antu tsa kaufela. Libue ore le vata petuo ey jaan. Momulauteo. Ekse, lat ons ni kla uwer dead of dat. Lat ons sa precis wat er soort veraneren. Wel jelle sin en di gronwet. So dat as ons derechan gabstatu. Ons mut da verweesigen mak wat weer spil. Di wel van di mens. Want di parlament sa hees van di mens. Ne sa hees van di liede wat jelle gekieses. So ek is uke blij dat di leierskap van AGRI SA, dat is a nationale organisatie. Ele het uke atjen worregen en Nordkap. Minier Nicole Jansen is iso, minier Petros Boschow is iso. En ele mey verseker dat ele gaan sam mit ons hier wies. Tot en ons gaan na Warrington, ons gaan na Springbok. So dat ele uke, ele kans kan kreei om te sa wat ele kan sa. Want soos ek gester en di ar ge sait. Di probleem wat ons wel oplos. Es ni as soort probleem of a wet probleem. Es sa seet afrikanse probleem. En as ons sam werk as soort en wet mens. Ons gaan oplossen kreei wat ons land foren tu sal nehmen. Ek het gester een goeie knopkiri gekuop. Maar ek gaan ni manslaan ni. Want di Koisan mens het hier die knopkiri gemak om te symbolisieren dat ien drach mak mach. Dat betekent as ons mekar werkslos hier di den. Ons gaan foren tu gaan. En ons wer foren tu gaan. Di mens het ver 25-jarige wach om a oplossen te kreei. En ek denke van hieri vergadering ons sal di oplossen kreei. Agas baye play om hier de wies met mey liede. Renale Maloko a parlament. The most qualified administration that you can get anywhere in the country. They don't misrepresent anything. They will capture everything. They brought their camera, their scribes and so on. And you are free to use any language that you want to use. And when you speak, don't face your constituency. Speak into the mic so that they capture everything. We want to make this a very successful gathering. I think what I'm also going to do. Because at school, I was very bad in arithmetic. So I don't want to be the one who says that three minutes is finished. I may end up giving others four minutes and people will say, what type of lawyer is this one who is not fair? So I have very, people who got distinctions in arithmetic and mathematics, they will monitor the time. So when they tell me the time is over, I have no choice to stop you and say, barre, na kuaya hau, ufe dili. Because if you challenge me, means you challenge the whole table. And then we will not have order in the meeting. But also, this collective in front wants to make sure that we treat all of you equally. And therefore, we will start on this side. What we're going to do and that we've been doing, we take names in front, in the middle and at the back. And then when we're done, we come this side. We take names in the middle, in front, in the middle and at the back. And then we can have a second round and do the same. So if you are not pointed us during the first round. Oskana na orno, go ro singe na kuaya hau utamu, esaluuka kans kreei. Ek vietne, what is the status of the people at the top now? Or the people at the top, we will also give them an opportunity to speak. I don't know how fast they will be able to run to come to the mic. But my leader, the leadership here will manage that part. So those are the house rules. Are we happy with that arrangement? Can we proceed? I'm starting on my left. Because even those that I know, I won't call them by name because I will be accused of discriminating against those that I don't know. So I'll give you numbers. There are people who will give you the stickers. Where are the people with the stickers? Okay, one. Two. Three, no, no three here. Yeah. But I'm biased towards women. And has she not raised an, oh, okay, fine. And then. Yeah. How many? One, two, three, four. Can we take another? And then we have five here? Okay. Yeah, yeah, give him. And then go to the middle. Can we have hands at the middle there? No, let's start here, we'll come back to the, yeah, one. Another one. I wanted to take the middle. The people in the middle unless they are not going to speak. Okay, go to the back. There, I see two hands at the back. Yeah, yeah, give him, yeah, that one. Yeah, yeah, the next one. Yeah, that one. And those two there. That's the. Okay. You know, some people want to think before they raise their hands. So don't worry, there will be a second chance. Let's start with those who are ready. But when we have finished these hands, we'll come this side. And then we'll come back this side for those who want a second chance. Where is the mic that they're going to use? Yeah, minier kani.
Honorable Chair Prof. Teli Muzeka. Honorable Members of the Panel. First, I want to raise my apologies and I want to ask you to accept my apologies for a lot of the people of civil society that can't be here today. Due to the failed fires near Kimberley in the direction of Warrington, a lot of members of the public are fighting shoulder to shoulder the effect of the fires and try to blaze the fires. So therefore, my apologies. Please accept the apologies of a large portion of the public, of the agricultural sector that want to be here here today. But due to the circumstances, they have to fight the fires. Jefferson, I've really, really, really understand the frustration of a lot of the public in terms of land and access to land. But first, I want to emphasize the importance of this process that we are busy of in amending the constitution. That is not something that we can do on a regular basis. Therefore, we have to do it right. Understand the frustration for people in the municipality areas living like sardinkis on each other within the personal space of each other. I understand the frustration for the need for land, for living space for that people. I understand the desire of the people, of the public, of the civil society, the urge for land to practice farming practices and have a lifestyle of farming. I understand the urge of that. Understand that a large portion of the 58 million people in South Africa desire that way of living, to have a few animals and have a living space with farmland to keep their animals. I understand the desire for that. But the first one, in terms of the living space of people, amending the constitution will not solve that problem, Chair. Amending the constitution to make provision for expropriation without compensation will not make the municipalities proactive and to address this issue. The municipalities do have land available. Why do they not have formal planning, grading out blocks, allow the people to build their houses and structures in a formalized manner and not living like sardines? They just told them, there is available land, go and live there. And it end up within the personal space of each other. And amending the constitution will not solve this problem. We have to address it on a municipality level and to better the performance of the municipality in that regard. In terms of farmland, Jefferson, all 58 million of us that have the desire for farmland can't farm in South Africa. We don't have enough resources to accomplish that. It's not possible. But there is one reality that no one can get away from and that is the economic reality. If you have a few cattle and sheep and goats and you enjoy the living conditions, at the end of the month, you are confronted with money to survive, to buy the necessary to go into the next month. And you have to make a profit to be able to do that. That is the economic reality. Therefore, Chair, I will hurry up. Therefore, we must make sure amending the constitution will keep the economic realities intact. Therefore, give property rights, Chair. I see you're angry now. Protect property rights. Take the word nil out of the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
The next one. That's not all the time to keep us. They are very spread with me here. They won't allow me to give anyone extra time. They will stop me and I have no choice but to obey them. Yeah.
Mornings. First, thank Chair for the opportunity to participate in this once-in-a-lifetime chance to observe the future of our country and the people of South Africa. The problem for the slow transformation The problem for the slow transformation is not Article 25, but the willingness and corruption along with a few other hiccupps along the road to more inclusive and vibrant economy for all South Africans. We need not to look at the problem, but focus on the outcome of what will happen if we change Article 25. No foreign investment will take place. The financial institutions of South Africa will collapse and there will be no one that we can lend any money. All the new upcoming farmers that you want to start a new life will have no, will have to do it without land that have no value. No financial institute will lend them money. So the economic growth for the country and the whole of South Africa, there will be no economic growth. The people wants title deeds. But what does the title deed of land mean to one if the land has no value? We as organized agriculture would like to see a more inclusive sector that can produce enough food for the people of South Africa and provide a lot of work in the agriculture sector. That cannot happen if there is no growth and stability in the sector as well as in the country. Changing Article 25 will not help the above mention. Thanks, Chair, for the opportunity and thanks for the work the panel have done so far. Thanks a lot.
Say who you are, your name from which organization.
Vian Farisberg, Agri Northern Cape.
Can you come back and introduce yourself? Not give another input, just introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Nicole Jansen, President of Agri Northern Cape.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Ohomudi Ueman Toto. I'm actually with the Chairperson of the Provincial House of Traditional Leaders, Josie Toto. She's unwell. She can't stand for her word. And then we also with Josie, the Deputy Chairperson of the Provincial House, Josie Bariki, but he has an emergency. He will to join us later as we proceed. So here are the submissions from, or inputs from the Provincial House of Traditional Leaders. They acknowledge and appreciate the spirit of Section 25.6, which provides that a person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure and as a result of past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to the extent provided by an act of Parliament, either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redress. Indeed, the legacy of apartheid has robbed a people of arable land, vast land which they was resettled in rocky, deserted, and unproductive land. We are in full support that amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution to enable expropriation without compensation should succeed. It is the express mandate from traditional leaders as per the resolution of the Indaba of traditional leaders and government that was held on the 28th of May to June 2017, that traditional leaders support the expropriation of land without compensation. However, such expropriation should exclude 13% owned by traditional council that is held by government in trust. Those land, those 13% should rather be transferred through title deeds to traditional councils. Traditional leadership care then look after its people through land administration for settlement purposes agricultural production, including grazing and for developmental purposes before punitive segregation laws were imposed on them. It is only fair that land should be restored to its original owners and not create a parallel structure called Communal Property Association or CPA. Land was not taken from CPA but from traditional communities led by their leaders. Traditional leaders are further calling for land audit on all land ownership in South Africa. Finally, traditional leaders are saying, calling for amendment of Section 211 of the Constitution, which is chapter 12 of the Constitution, should be amended to clearly define the roles and functions and powers of traditional leaders and traditional authorities. The powers and functions of traditional leaders and councils are not clearly defined but differ to subsequent legislation. We hope that this input will be considered, Chairperson. Thank you.